Welcome to tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting. We're going to start with a few items of old business and new. The first one would be considering the approval of amendments for November 9th, 2023. Do we have a motion on that or do you want to push that off?
I think a motion. We had them last time, so.
All right.
Yes. Second?
I think a motion we approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved?
That was November, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any correspondence to consider tonight?
You could take up the-
Report to the-
The report, the draft for the annual report if you guys are okay.
Yeah. There's a report that we, the zoning board of appeals provides to the town of Abington. It just summarizes what we did, how many things came before us, what we did with them and all that. So is there a motion to approve this, this draft as it currently exists that we received?
I'll make that motion.
Then I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so moving on. The first new item on the agenda is a petition of J.C. Morris Irrevocable Home Trust for a special permit under 175-32i accessory apartments to allow for an accessory apartment in variance under 175-29 dimensional and density regulations to allow for a 10-foot, yeah, 10 feet side setback for a 10 by 16 addition. The property is located at 83 Crabtree Lane on Assessors Map 44, lot 122, in the residential R30 zone. Please let us know who you are and who you're representing tonight.
Certainly, my name, for the record, is attorney Sean Riley of 500 Washington Street in Abington, and I am representing the applicants, which is under the name of the J.C. Morris Irrevocable Home Trust. But the people behind the trust is the Morris family, and there's five of them here with me tonight. The two most important at the far right in the second row, that's Camille and Jim Morris, who currently reside at the house, and to their right, my left, in front of you, is from left to right, their son Jeff, wife Barbara, and Mackenzie, future residents of the house. We're here for 83 Crabtree Lane. We've submitted an application for the special permit to construct an accessory apartment, which is commonly called an in-law apartment, in addition to a side yard variance of 10 feet. The package we submitted consisted of the $400 filing fee, the certified abudders list, the application, a plot plan that shows a bird's eye view of the lot with the existing structure and the proposed addition. I also attached a plan that showed the lot with an overlay of the floodplain, the wetlands protection floodplain overlay, so you can get an idea of what's in the backyard, and then, of course, a copy of the assessors card and the assessors' plan. We also submitted a copy of the proposed floor plan and a sketch of the proposed elevation of what the building would look like when completed and if approved. The special permit, as you know, for the in-law apartment requires that the in-law apartment be less than 900 square feet or less than 50% of the existing house. The existing house's footprint is approximately 2,530 square feet, according to the assessors' office. This proposed addition is 768 square feet, so we comply with that. It is intended for the residents of the elder Mr. and Mrs. Morris sitting over to our right. They are of retirement age, they are encountering some health problems with the family, and this is actually, this is a very nice house, a single-story house with a basement on Crabtree. So the thought was they would have, their son would move home with his family, and they would move into the main house, mom and dad would move into the addition, which is the in-law. There's an attached two-car garage and a driveway. In front of the two-car garage is also a paved driveway area that exists to the, what you see as the left of the garage. The proposed addition would be off the garage to the left. We looked at trying to put the addition off the back of the building, but that caused some problems because of the layout of the existing structure and the fact that the floodplain overlay district is in the rear of the yard. Currently, there's a pool out back there, and if we were to put the in-law out back, it would essentially require that Mr. and Mrs. Morris, and when I reference Mr. and Mrs., I am talking about Jim and Camille, would essentially come home in the garage and then have to cut through the main house to get to their apartment, which, depending how family relations are going, could be a good thing, could be a bad thing. It's better and preferred if we separate the units as much as possible. So then we looked at trying to build this addition immediately adjacent to what is shown there as the western or the left wall, but that left wall, if you went in the house, is the kitchen wall. It has all the plumbing, it has windows looking out, and essentially to block all the windows or to rip out the kitchen would be obviously a substantial expense, but just blocking the windows would just kind of destroy the character and the home itself. So the designer has the proposal as shown, which allows windows to be on both sides of the addition and the windows to remain. Now, obviously, the windows are going to be kind of indirect light, but it's still, there's still windows nonetheless, and they also can still allow fresh air to get in. What, if you look at what we submitted with the floor plans, namely especially the elevation plan, I think you'll see it's also designed with an eye to disguising the whole in-law apartment. If you see the elevation drawings that we submitted, and I think your crack staff is-
Have you passed it?
No, I didn't, I didn't see it. Oh, there it is right there.
Oh, there it is.
So there's the front view from the street. So we maintain the character of a single-family home. What you see to the left of the garage would be the proposed addition, and despite the fact that that addition is, has a separation between the addition and the main house, if you go to the other elevation from the side, which is the neighbor to the left, essentially it, it still looks as one, the side of a house. It's not noticeable that it is a separated addition. It's actually attached, and the only people that know that there's some airspace in between them would be the Morris family themselves. So in looking for the variance, we're proposing, the R30 zone requires a 20-foot side yard setback. This proposal would have a 10-foot setback, and it is a 10 by 48, sorry, a 16 by 48 addition. The, again, the hardships that are present here are going out back would require additional zoning relief or different zoning relief because of the floodplain overlay district. It gets wet out back, and it would require us also, again, to have some sort of passage through the main house, and also it would basically eliminate some of the pool and the backyard view of the existing main house. What this proposal will do would allow Mr. and Mrs. to basically return to the house and park in the garage and have immediate and covered access into the in-law apartment, which is critical for Mr. and Mrs. Morris due to, some of the medical issues that they are working with. This proposal would maintain the integrity of the main house. It'd essentially be no change to the main house, which would obviously save them a significant amount of money and avoid that hardship. And as I mentioned, and as we showed, the view from the street and the view from the neighbor would also be a somewhat normal-looking view of a, of a house. A literal enforcement of this ordinance would either prevent it from being built in that location or it would require us to go out back, but as I just repeated, it would create certain hardships, and it gets us into the floodplain area in the, in the area out back. The medical hardship and the cost of doing the construction, either attached to the building or to the back of the building, is obviously the hardship that they would like to avoid based on the existing structure, which is one of the, the standards of the variance. And we would propose that this is not a substantial detriment to the public good as it does, does exactly what an accessory apartment is intended to do and keep families together. It's limited to only in-laws or relatives. The setbacks, a side yard setback of 20 feet is, biggest thing in design, attention for a setback is for fire hazards and for aesthetics, keeping houses not too close to each other. So theoretically, you would have a house on an R30 lot being 20 feet off the line, and the abudder would be at least 20 feet off the line for a total of 40 feet. I just wanted to show you an aerial view of the existing house and the existing neighbor who is on the side of the proposed addition. The neighbor to the left of our house, if you're looking at our house, the existing house right now is over 80 feet away, and it's 80 feet away from our existing side driveway. It's about a little bit over 90, 90 to 95 from actually the edge of our existing house. But I measured it from the driveway because the driveway essentially lines up where the proposed addition would be. So that, that setback of the driveway to the house next door is 80 feet, so it's not basically imposing onto our neighbors. And I will say for the record that Camille and Jim have talked to their neighbors on both sides of their house. The Sextons live on the right side, and then across the street, Sue Frasu, if I said her name right, also lives across the street, and none of them had any objection. In fact, one of them offered to come here tonight, but was not asked to come here. She was, she's at home right now, and hopefully she'll watch this later. No substantial detriment to the public good does not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent of the law, because the intent of the law of the setbacks is basically to keep some distance between structures. And again, our proposed structure, our proposal would have about 80 feet or so of distance between the structures, and aesthetically, it's something honestly, if you drove by, you might not even notice when it's all said and done. Special permit-wise, we comply again with all of the in-law requirements as far as connections, accessibility, size, and I believe that we have basically provided all the information needed to allow the board to grant not only the special permit but the variance and to allow Mr. and Mrs. Morris to build the in-law and then the younger Morris family to move in and help with their issues by living in the main house. If you have any questions, obviously I'll do my best to answer them, or if I can't do it, I'm sure Camille can.
Do you guys have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Sean, on the side variance of the new addition, I noticed that, and of course with this handout we gave, there's pavement facing the front door of the addition, new addition that's being placed on, but there's also a side door on the left side of that. Do you plan on covering that with pavement also to get to that door?
Are you talking about the side door of the-
The left side door of the addition.
Of the, of the addition?
Yeah.
I don't think that's been decided whether it would be fieldstone walk, walks or a paved. Likely with the wheelchair, it would be a paved or some sort of concrete walk.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Riley?
I don't have any questions.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Sean said, said all very well.
Thanks. So can I get a motion to close the public portion of the meeting so the board can deliberate?
So mentioned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The only thing I'd say is when we read any kind of motion, we should make sure that the addition is listed as 16 by 48, instead of 10 by 16.
I noticed that. The notice said 10 instead of 48, but everything else that was submitted shows 48.
Yeah. So I'm in favor of this. I drove by there today, there's lots of space over to the neighbor. As long as the abutting neighbors don't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it. You guys have any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would, I would say is that we just include in the finding also the annual report that has to be filed for all of these accessible additional areas that each individual year the owner will have to file a report with the town building department.
Yes, an annual affidavit, right?
Annual affidavit, yes.
Yep. Yep.
I, I think it complies with the, the requirements needed for a variance based on the topography, soil conditions. The floodplain, floodlands protection district out back kind of-
Kind of messes that up anyway.
Messes things up a bit.
Seemed like a pretty-
And the lot itself is somewhat odd-shaped. I don't know if that really matters as to where this is being placed, but it is an odd-shaped lot, so.
Yeah, seemed like a well-reasoned solution to me.
Yep. It's definitely a hardship as a result of the-
Yeah, and it's family, so. Okay. Any further discussion?
None here.
All right. Can I get a motion so we can vote on this matter?
Why don't we do two separate ones, one for the accessory and one for the, so I would, on the petition of J.C. Morris Irrevocable Home Trust for a special permit under section 175-32i accessory apartments, move to allow for an accessory apartment at, at 83 Crabtree Lane on Assessors Map 44, lot 22, in the residential 30, R30 zone.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So the, we have a variant. The special permit was approved, and I'll let's consider the variance.
I would make a motion to approve the petition for a variance of J.C. Morris Irrevocable Home Trust under section 175-29 to allow for a 10-foot side setback for a 16 by 48-foot addition to be built in substantial conformity with the plans submitted with the application or the petition. The property is located at 83 Crabtree Lane on Assessors Map 44, lot 22, in the R30 zone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, good luck with your addition. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and I know the Morris family also wanted us to thank the building department staff for helping us out, kind of work this through the process. Appreciate it.
Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is the petition of Stephen W. O'Donohue for a special permit under 175-32-i dimensional, or excuse me, accessory apartments to allow for an accessory apartment in variance under 175-29 dimensional and density regulations. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Let me start over. Petition of Stephen W. O'Donohue for a special permit under 175-32i accessory apartments to allow for an accessory apartment in, in variance under 175-29 dimensional and density regulations to allow for a 17-foot side setback for a 26 by 24 addition. The property is located at 65 Highfields Road on Assessors Map 15, lot 97, in the residential R30 zone. My understanding is that one of our-
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself right now.
Is going to recuse themselves because of potential for the appearance of a conflict of interest because family live in the area. What that means is we can listen to the petition, but we won't be able to vote on it until, we'd have to continue the rest of the hearing for voting on it until next month.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that a emergency meeting could potentially be thought of if we get the approval here? If I could have, request an emergency meeting be held to not wait the, the month?
I don't know that our zoning bylaws allow that.
If you continue this specific, this specific petition and give it a date and time, then yes, you can, you can do that.
Okay.
And then we would advertise the public hearing notice since we've met the criteria of chapter 48, but you have to give it a specific date and time. And unfortunately, that would be pretty, that's pretty difficult to do when we don't know the schedule of the missing ZBA member. So now we're going to deadlock him to a date and time that we don't know. Do you know what I'm saying? We can't walk out of here saying, we're going to continue this and we'll get back to you. We have to, you have to say a date and a time.
Right.
So, so can it, can it be done? The answer is yes. Can it be done without mentioning a date? The answer is no.
Yeah. I guess, you know, as, as much as I would like to do that, I'm kind of uncomfortable with the idea of obligating another board member to be here at a particular time when we don't have any information about his availability.
And to let Mr. O'Donohue know, the only time that additional meetings are held for the zoning board of appeals are for cases such as the chapter 40B, the comprehensive permit, where that, that's an extensive project, so normally that requires a whole separate meeting because that can go, that project alone on a meeting can go for hours. So your request, albeit it is plausible, it would be difficult for them, and that's completely at their discretion if you want to, you know, if you would like to do it, but then again, not knowing even if Mr. Negrely will be available.
He'll be able to review this on, right? So he'll be able to review the hearing and get the, the documents that we have.
Correct. And so the, the goal is, as I spoke to you on the phone, the goal is to let you speak to your petition. In case there's something missing that the two board members would like to see at the February 8th hearing, then you would cover that. However, by opening this, immediately continuing this to February 8th and not letting you speak on anything, what if there's something that you missed that they would like to see? Then you would have taken care of it on February 8th.
Oh, I fully understand that.
And during the time after this meeting, Mr. Negrely gets back, he, I will hunt him down to have him watch the video, and then he will do an affidavit stating that he saw the video and that, yes, he is aware of the existing situation in order to vote on February 8th, and that's where we're at.
And so my only request for this was that it's pushing me out another 30 days, and the reason I'm here is because my sister-in-law is sick. And so, you know, so now I'm pushing 30 days, which is then going to push 45 days. And so my request is simply if an emergency meeting could happen once Mr. Negrel, is that?
Negrely.
Negrely comes in, and we can do that stuff maybe at some point in time to shorten that time period rather than waiting 30 days and then having another 20 days afterwards where appeals can happen, that something can shorten that timeframe. That was my only hope for the request, and I understand the board, I understand the constraints on the board, but that was my request.
Right. The, the emergency part, based on the criteria, the board is mandated to continue a petition if it cannot be voted on, whether all members are here. They sometimes, you know, continue it, but they have to continue it saying this is motion to continue to the next public hearing date. So they give a date and time where all of them know they are to be in attendance. This one is going to be without a date and time, and that's the problem. And I have no idea unless you guys know when Rich is back. I have no idea.
I don't know. We, we have a published schedule for meetings, and he informed us, you know, some time ago that he couldn't make this one.
He may be in it.
So I don't know when he's going to be back and available to have a meeting, so the only thing we could do tonight, in my estimation, is to, is to schedule, have you present tonight, and Mr. Negrely watch it, and be able to vote on it on February 8th. If something else can be done in the interim, we can try that, but we, that would at least give you, you know, no later than, and I don't, that is a problem, you know, because of issues with your family. I apologize for that, but we're, we're kind of hamstrung here.
No, I understand that. It was just my, my request for the, for the motion on it, and, and like you say, I came into almost, you know, snake-bitten with, you know, the member recusing himself from this, which I had no knowledge of going into this, so.
Yeah. Like breaking news, I'm afraid.
Yes, which is understandable. I, I understand. So my only hope is that I could just ask if that could be done, and if it can, I'd be, I'd be hopeful. If not, then February 8th is when I'll be here.
So my, my suggestion is you present what you have.
Yes, sir.
You can ask questions, see if there's any other information we might need, and then there's a form to fill out to request a continuation, and we can put the date of February-
No, we don't even need to do that.
If we vote for a continuation, doesn't he have to sign this?
No, no, we just continue it. At, at this point in time, the special permit is, is 90 days from the closing of the hearing. The variance is what, what the issue is. The variance from the time this petition was stamped in, it's 100 days.
All right.
100 days, normally the state alots 100 days to be two public hearings. So he should, he will be fine until February 8th. If it continues to march, which I'm hoping it won't, then he will need to do a continuance to extend the hearing. But right now, we're fine.
Okay, so the continuance is only for the state on the variance?
Only for, yeah, only for, hypothetically, if the variance is at 85 days and your next meeting's not for 30, you're gonna, you're not gonna make the 100.
Right.
And, and, and so you need both the applicant and the zone, and the board to agree to a continuance of a certain amount of days.
Just for that particular purpose.
Exactly.
I don't have to do it just because.
No.
Okay, just want to make sure of that.
Yeah.
Make sure you're covered and there's no messing around behind.
I'm going to put you on, I want to make sure that the, Nancy puts you on first at 7:05, but if we can, you know, like I said to you, do your song and dance, get as much out as possible, I think that February will go quickly. And the building department would do, it's best to help you through the process.
No worries, no worries.
So if you could, if you could give us your, your name and address and tell us what you're, what you're here for, that would be fantastic.
My name is Stephen O'Donohue. I live at 65 Highfields Road. It's a tough act to follow after Mr. Riley, but I'll, I'll try to do my best here. I am looking for a special permit under, is it chapter 175, section 32i accessory apartments to allow for an accessory apartment in a variance under chapter 175, section 29 dimensional density and regulations to allow for a 17-feet side setback for a 26 by 24 addition.
All right. Okay. I guess it'd be nice to just know what, you know, what, why you're looking for these, what, you know, and what hardships it will place on you and your family if we can't do something with it.
So I'm looking for this addition specifically if the board has seen I applied, I requested a variance, I think in 2016.
16.
Yes, yes, sir. 2016, that was for my grandmother-in-law, so my wife's family has a genetic, is this a public hearing? I don't want to, is this going out live? So I can't, I don't want to expose too much of a family something.
You just say health issues.
Yeah, my sister-in-law is, has health issues on my wife's side of the family, and so she was doing fine until this point where it's gotten worse, and she asked my wife if we could redo the in-law apartment that we had set up for my wife's grandmother to, for her, because she wants, she's going to be, need to be taken care of. So the 26 by 24 request is so that a wheelchair accessible inside, and it will be attached in-law for my sister-in-law, would be keeping in the character of the neighborhood. It does not affect the zoning districts which are located, but it does. It does not nullify or stamp CD, deviate from the bylaws, so the hardship for us is going to be, is we're going to have to care for my sister-in-law, and to do that or put her somewhere where she needs the care that she's going to need is going to be a financial burden for us to take care of her. So we're asking that the board approve our request to put the in-law apartment. As you can see, the, it blends in with the existing structure of the house. We've just had some renovations done, and we're still almost finishing up now, so the house has been redone. The 17-foot, the three-foot variance would still allow 17 feet between the property lines, which is still separated by a stockade fence as well.
Okay. Bob, do you have questions for them?
I do. First question was the obvious one, to me at least, that in 2016, the position of the addition was setback, and I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, but if I look at it with a couple of adjustments, you wouldn't have to even be here.
Correct.
So why did we move it forward? What was the reason for moving, and why did we increase the size when we moved it forward?
So we moved it forward because in the new, the addition that we did now, we put a sunroom in the back there. So that sunroom is there now with the windows in the sunroom. So to move the addition back would completely cover up that side of the sunroom if we put that setback.
Okay.
So that's why we came forward.
Okay.
And we increased the, the, the size of it to give them more living space for a hospice bed and potentially a wheelchair in that.
Accessibility.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And given that fact, I didn't see on anything, were you going to utilize the front of that space at all with parking? Were you going to extend the driveway in front of the house or something?
So instead of-
Because your driveway is over here, your front door is here, and then you had the addition over here, but there's nothing that I noticed that you were going to create an accessibility point to the front of the house. Is there going to be a front of accessibility to the front of the house?
The wheelchair ramp will come from the back down the side.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. So there'll be no front door facing the street.
At all.
At all. Just the windows on the picture that I can, that you can see, I think.
That's fine. No, I just, I was concerned there was, there was no mention at all to mention, given the fact that you were coming in from the right side of the property, that you had to go directly across or come in with another driveway, which would have been even closer to the property line, because you already have a shed that, shed there.
Yep.
And whether or not you're going to have to do something else there with more ground covering. Again, my, my only concern there is under the building requirements is how much ground covering we have in the front of the house. If we have an existing two-car driveway that's actually a four-car driveway, because you can pack four cars in your driveway, how much more are you going to cover the ground on that side of the building if you were going to put more structure over there or ground cover over there? Because this, there is a limit based on square foot. That was my, the obvious one, because you already got one, you're already here, you know, a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
And got it approved, so I was like, whoa, wait a minute.
It looks like you may have to move some AC units, is that, is that what you're understanding?
So the AC-
I see in the drawing that the AC units are right in the middle of the addition.
They are, so those can be moved over to the left-hand side or to the back, backside as well, and the re, and the ducting will be rerouted.
Okay. Yeah.
And obviously the fence- And obviously the fence that's there will, will, will come down as well, and those sections of the fence will be used to continue the fence down the side of the property to create that barrier that we're talking about.
I, I did notice that you did file a list of butters that you had notified. Has anyone reached out to you at all with any concerns with this addition?
No concerns but support, so my next-door neighbor, Judy, she was talking about the support of it, and then I, again, the, the family member here was supportive of as well, and.
Is there any physical land issues with like rock ledge, or a lot of seepage issues, or marsh issues in the, on your property at all?
No, sir, I don't believe we're part of the floodplain at all, I don't.
It, it looks to me, well, I guess it'd be part of deliberation, but it looks like that if you're gonna put an addition on the house, with the in-ground pool in back, and you'd be having the same issue with setback on the other side of the house, and probably wouldn't work the interior layout either, that's my guess, but.
I'm sorry, what the?
Well, no, other question, just observations.
Okay.
I think you, if you're gonna make an addition, that you picked the right spot for it.
Thank you.
My point.
And we set it back, just the two-foot setback is so we don't have to move the electrical, that's existing there as well, so that was, that was the reason why it didn't go flush.
Okay, right. I'm, I think I'm good.
Yeah, so am I, so procedurally, we have to ask him if he wants a continuance to the next, well, he doesn't have a choice, because we don't have a quorum for his.
Yes, yeah, so if Mr. O'Donoghue's okay, you can make a motion to continue this to February eighth at seven oh five PM, when you, when you have a quorum.
Okay.
Unless there's something else you need.
I don't, is there anyone else who wants to speak on this matter at all?
Okay, if not, I'll make a motion that, the petition by Stephen W. O'Donoghue for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-two dot I accessory apartment, that will allow the accessory apartment at a variance under one seventy-five dash twenty-nine dimensional density regulations, to allow for a seventeen-foot setback for a twenty-six by twenty-four addition, the property located at sixty-five High Road on Assessors Map fifteen, Lot ninety-seven, in a residential R thirty zone, as submitted with the plans associated with the application, be continued to February's meeting.
That would be February eighth.
February eighth's meeting.
At seven oh five.
At seven oh five PM.
Okay. All, I can second it.
Yeah.
And then, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see you again in February, and hopefully it'll be a.
Thank the board for the time, and thanks for building the apartment.
Good luck to your family, too.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is petition of Mary P. Carroll for a special permit under one seventy-five, excuse me, one seventy-five dash thirty-two I accessory apartments, to allow for an accessory apartment and a finding under MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six, to allow for a sixteen by twenty addition. The property is located at one oh six Lincoln Street, on Assessors Map fifty-two, Lot one twenty-one, in the residential R thirty zone. Please let us know who you are and what your address is.
Absolutely. My name is Sam Kish, I'm a contractor based out of Waymouth, I'm here representing Mary Carroll, who's seated over there. We are seeking, first off, a quick clarification on that, the overall dimensions of the addition is actually twenty by twenty-four, the first section is sixteen feet, and then there's an additional eight feet, that's in a slightly different segment.
Okay.
So I may have written that incorrectly in the application, my apologies for that.
So it's, so what is it, what is it, twenty by twenty-four?
Twenty by twenty-four, correct.
Okay, twenty-five by twenty-four?
Twenty by twenty-four.
Twenty by twenty-four, okay, just making sure we have it straight away.
We are seeking a special permit, as, as stated, for an accessory apartment, to house Jane Carroll, Mary's aging mother, who currently resides in Milton, Braintree, sorry, in Braintree, as she's aging, looking to move her in to be closer to her family, to be able to care for her. We are, I believe, within all of the setback requirements, the addition will be constructed on the, technically, on the right side of the house, the address is one oh six Lincoln Street, but it does a corner, is a corner lot on Lincoln and Warren Street. The functional front door, which is used, is located on Warren Street, so it is off the backside of that. The addition will be constructed on piers, on footings, the grade of the property slopes down, so construction-wise, didn't make a lot of sense to have an eight-foot concrete wall in the backyard. So it'll be constructed off the back in a similar style to the rest of the house, with an intersecting gable roof, which matches an addition that had been put on prior to the current owners, which you can see in the elevations. So intersecting gable roof, and then that second segment, which brings you to that twenty-four feet in length, will have a shed roof, and there's a small porch that's, a small private porch deck that's included in that. There's an access to an existing deck off the back of the house, which will allow for our second egress, and then a door into the main portion of the house.
Okay. Do we have any questions? I had one, which is, it, the sloping parts, I drove by there, I live not too far from here, but is there any wetlands issues or floodplain issues off, on that side of the house?
There are wetlands, I've had a conversation with Conservation, they're my, they're my next stop after you guys.
Okay.
We are, I believe, it's approximately sixty, sixty-five feet, I believe, from the wetlands, we did have that flagged by a, by a surveyor, that's all mapped up, I have spoken with Conservation, we have an NDA, I don't remember which acronym it is, not the NOI, but a request for determined.
RDA.
There it is, it's too many, too many letters.
Too many.
So we do have an RDA with them to, to go through that, and on the survey, plot plan, we do have marked out for erosion controls. Part of the, the construction of that, this is also helpful when we're doing footings versus the poured foundations, we have no heavy equipment going back there, which again is a, a conservation conversation, but that, that did go into the design of it, that just allows us to go in just with manpower and not be dragging in excavators and heavy equipment.
All right. Does anyone have other questions or additional questions?
The, the application in the notice says you're looking for a finding under six forty-eight, is, second six, is that not the case? You're just looking for a special permit, is that?
I bel-
Because they, on the, on the application, you checked off special permit and finding.
I believe in my conversation with Marion.
Hold on. I just don't wanna miss something.
No, absolutely.
You said you were just looking for the special permit, so I don't.
If, if I, if I misspoke, whatever Marion tells me, then I'm.
There's your first mistake.
It's a fifteen thousand square foot lot, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so I was.
They're making it.
Yeah, more non-conforming. But it, yeah, and, but at the same time, the addition is not requiring any variances, therefore, it's, it's, they're, they're intensifying the non-conformity, but they're not.
Right.
But they're not extending, they're not increasing the non-conformity. If that be the best way to put it, I'm trying to, yes. They're intensifying.
Because they're adding, there's, it's already non-conforming.
It's already a non-conforming.
Because of what makes it non-conforming?
The lot size.
The lot size itself.
Self, yes.
And the fact that there's a structure on it.
Yes.
And you're making the structure.
Bigger.
Bigger, so you probably should do a.
Yeah, a find, to be safe.
Just to be safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And as long as that's not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity, then we're okay.
Yes, behind where the addition is going, there's, there's no house in sight off the back of it, so we're not moving closer to any structures. I believe, I don't think I have an overhead shot, but I believe, Mary, is there any, there's no one on the backside of the?
On the back.
Right, so there's, there's neighbors to, to the left of the house, going down Warren Street, but that's not, we're not getting any closer to that. So from, from that, from that standpoint, that's where we're, that's where we're going from.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for, for him?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, real quick, so, Bob, just so you're aware, you are in the flood zone there, and you, I don't know what the total value of this project is, but once you trigger fifty percent of the assessed value of the structure, not the land and the structure, that triggers full FEMA complacency.
Okay.
So that's something just you wanna keep in mind.
Sure.
Moving forward to try to figure out, if you could pull your assessors card here, and there's two values on here, there's one for the building itself, and then one for the land. So you'd be up to fifty percent of that value.
Okay.
I mean, you're welcome to get an independent appraisal on that.
Sure.
You know, if the value is not right, but however, that will trigger reassess.
Do you have, I just don't have it in front of me, what's the assess?
So you have the, let's see here, and I know they just updated these, so you've got the assessed value for the building at two hundred thirty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So you roughly have half of that, and I know that you have some pretty substantial structural work here, so that might be eating up.
Thank you very much. So, so under fifty, it's once we reach fifty percent of the assessed value of the structure?
Correct.
Okay.
The only concern I see, I know this is for something entirely different, just something that, we could work you through it down the building department, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Conservation can help you as well.
Yeah.
I don't mean to get off track here.
That's okay.
It's a major thing here.
Yeah, yeah.
And also your utilities will have to be one foot above base blood elevation.
Okay.
So I don't know what's existing down here, it looks like you may have some portion of the building here at grade, but then some below grade as well?
The, it, it's a walkout basement.
Okay.
So the basement is at, is at grade.
At grade, so you'd have to figure out where you are, what zone you're in, and then if the utilities.
The utilities, as they sit, specifically looking at septic drain, is about five feet high.
Heating system and.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Once you have some time, why don't you?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
And then also with, like, first hearing we had this evening, it'll have to be an annual affidavit filed with the town to let us know that you have a relative living in this accessory apartment, it's just a requirement that the, the town has, just, just making sure you're aware of that.
Sure, so that's, and that's filed with, what department is that filed with?
Building Department.
With Building Department, okay.
I'll work you through along these details.
Sure.
And get you set up, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is there any more questions?
I'm good.
I don't have any questions right now.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
I'm on Warren Street, so I do.
Can, can you just come up?
Come up and just let us know who you are, and what your address is, so we have on record.
Maureen Devlin, I'm at twenty-one Warren Street, which if you're facing, it's gonna be addition on the left side, so that first addition that is there is on support columns. How would the septic in the water be drawn in from, because I believe it's on Lincoln Street. So that, the house is attached on Lincoln Street for water and sewer, right?
It should be in the plot plan here, if you want to see. That's your sewer connection, sewer connection comes out here and actually goes out on Warren Street.
Right, so it goes out, oh.
So I guess the question is, there's not gonna be a separate sewer connection for this particular?
Right, exactly, thank you.
It's gonna all come through the same.
Okay, because that's how the street's already chewed up anyway, so, I mean, I've been saying it needs to be done, but, okay, so I didn't, and so it comes out, but it goes on to Warren, I thought it was on Lincoln Street when they tied it, okay, because the addition, that's the first addition, because we've been there when they, when they were doing it, and that's on support columns. So it's gonna be the main house, support columns, and then another support column at the house?
And that will be off the back in line, so from, from your view, so, closer than mine here, so from your view from the house, the deck that you usually look at, it's going on the backside of the deck, if you're looking from your backyard.
Okay. So the side with their, the addition is with their window, it's gonna be, the bay window that's on the side of their addition's gonna be high enough? So if you're looking from a side view, if I'm just looking from my, looking at a side view, what would I see?
So from your side here, so this is, this is the existing deck that's there.
The old deck, then.
No, that deck is already there, so that, yes, sorry, yes, so there's a small deck that's, that's part of that, and you're looking from the side there.
So this will review of being solid wall?
Uh, no, I think they just didn't draw, nothing, nothing is changing to the, to the addition on this side, the elevations just show, don't show all the existing windows.
It's a matter of. So I guess I'm just confused, where's, where's the addition that's there now?
That's this space right here.
So it looks like, it's like, when I look at it from my, here's my house, this is what I see now with the bay window, is that going right next to it?
So all of, so this here and this space is all existing, so the addition is, is past this going towards Lincoln Street.
Okay, okay, got it, yeah, it's like, what was a little mixed now, okay.
So you, you look at the existing deck now.
Yeah.
Right, so you're gonna see, you're gonna see an additional deck, and then maybe the other end of the addition.
In the backside.
Okay, okay.
And all, all finishes and siding to match.
Yep.
We're not doing, you know, purple cedar shingles or anything crazy like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
How about Neil?
And to, to clarify the, the septic layout, there's no new utilities being added because it is an accessory in-law apartment, there's nothing new adding from the street, it's all, there will probably be.
Sorry, you don't get a new street, sorry.
I know. I mean, I could break it, but then I'd have to pay for it, so.
Okay, if we have no further questions of him, I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting for deliberations.
Motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second?
Second? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's decide what we wanna do here, I guess. So are we, Mr. Chairman, are we going to go after the special permit and after a Chapter forty-eight finding separately?
Yes, I think that's.
Is that the appropriate way to go about this?
Yeah.
Cover our bases, so we have to get two votes on this, right?
Right.
And, and.
On, on the finding, but on the special permits unit, it has to be announced.
Right, and the finding can be two out of three.
And that's be two out of three.
Yeah.
That ain't bad.
So they should, you should do them separately, obviously.
Okay, and, and one more final clarification, at the, under the second last sentence, the addition is twenty by twenty-four, not sixteen by twenty?
That's correct.
We should add that they, they have to get the approval of Conservation for, because of where it is.
Yeah, they'll have to do that, yeah.
We have to state that in our.
No, we don't have to.
Okay, just wanna make sure that we don't, cover our bases.
If one domino falls, they all fall.
Right.
Okay, okay, hopefully they don't have them fall.
No.
So on, on the special permit, as long as it's controlled as to number, area location, relation to the neighborhood and other characteristics, what's being proposed would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, what's being proposed to not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare, as long as they meet those standards, then we can issue a special permit.
Okay.
I think, I think that's the case here.
Yeah, I, I agree.
On the six A finding, as long as it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, then we can.
Allow that.
Issue a, a section six finding, and I think that's the case here, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
My opinion.
Okay, I agree. Can we entertain a motion on the special permit first?
A motion of the petition of Mary P. Carroll for a special permit under one seventy-five dash thirty-two dot I accessory apartment to allow for an accessory apartment at the property located at one oh six Lincoln Street on assessing map fifty-two, lot one twenty-one in the residential R thirty zone, with the specification of the dimensions being twenty by twenty-four as the plan submitted. I.
To be built, to be built in.
To be built in substantially.
Conformist with the.
With the plans as they were submitted.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the special permit has been approved with the petition by Mary Carroll for an accessory apartment in the finding under Mass General Law's chapter forty A, section six, to allow for a twenty by twenty-four addition on property located at one oh six Lincoln Street on assessing map fifty-two, lot one twenty-one in the residential R thirty zone, where we are not causing any more issues with the non-conformity that apparently exists, I vote to approve that. Okay, do we have a second?
You want to just add, inconformist with.
Inconformist with the plan submitted with the application.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with your addition, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the. The final item on our agenda this evening is the petition of Michael Ahern of one ninety Willard Street, Quincy, Mass, for a variance under one seventy-five dash fourteen, location of and driveway access to principal building, in order to allow the existing detached accessory garage to become a three-bedroom and one-bathroom, single-dwelling unit, creating a second principal building on a lot. Property is located, is owned by the Rourke Mary Elizabeth Investment Trust. The property is located at four sixty-six Plymouth Street on Assessor's Map forty, lot fifty-nine in the residential R thirty zone. Please let us know who you are and your address.
Yes, Michael Ahern, one ninety Willard Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, oh two one six nine.
What are you applying, Michael?
I'm applying tonight to convert the existing, pre-existing two-story garage structures located on the property that I believe was existing residential use at one time into a three-bedroom apartment and be served by the same driveway that is currently serving the main structure as shown on the plan. The, the existing structure does need substantial work, and the income that would be generated from the apartment would be helpful in, in salvaging the structure and being able to redo it. And also afford us the ability to add some more housing to the community. We're over the, we have no dimensional setback issues, we have no wetlands issues, and we are a little better than ten thousand square feet over the required zoning for an R thirty. I've submitted the plot plan, the proposed parking plan, the pre-existing floor plans and elevations, as well as the proposed floor plans and elevations. There's one minor addition to the rear of the building as, to protect the rear egress, which is on the exterior, to give a buffer from the snow with a roof addition that comes off the rear of the building over the sliding door to the deck.
So that your, your main impetus here is to save that structure, and in order to do that, you, you need to generate some income to help pay for those.
That's correct, that's correct, it's a large structure, previous owners had a six-car garage, now this would become a five-car garage. I don't know if that generated income before, but in, in order to save the structure, and I think it's a great structure, it's been there a long, long time, post and beam, I think it's pretty original to the property, and I'd really like to salvage it if I can.
When you talked about rehabbing that building, what sort of things do you need to do, like structural things? Are you going to enhance the outside, or what would you like to do?
The structure, the engineers of the structure is actually very solid, but we would have to replace a majority of the roofing siding. The windows would definitely have to be replaced as they're old, single-hung windows, so they wouldn't make the egress code. And then there's no insulation in the building. The, the building does have its own electrical meter and power source, but it would have to be updated. And then the plumbing would tie into the existing sewer system, and then there's obviously the fee to the sewer department for every bedroom. That would be, had to be paid as well.
Okay. Do you guys have other questions?
The only thing that I, I didn't see is the, the plan for the siding, is it going to keep with what's currently there? Are you going to change it, and are you going to change it so it looks like the existing building, or is it going to be different?
No, it would look like the existing building.
Okay. The footage over the back where you're adding that roof to protect from the weather, that also would cover the whole porch, correct?
It would cover the porch, but not the staircase.
Okay.
And it's not a bump out of the whole entire porch, just a roof over the exposed open deck.
Okay. Do you, as far as heating, I know this is outside the premises of the zoning board, but as far as heating it, is there a need to bring in a heating system for this?
There would be a need to bring in a heating system, we would look at doing an electric heating and cooling.
Okay. The basis of a three-bedroom apartment, I assume is for economically, because you'd get a bigger family there?
Economic reasons, also the size of the footprint, it's a rather large space.
Mm-hmm, it is, I'm very familiar with it, so. I drive by it almost every day. Do you guys have other questions?
I am with Mr. Chairman.
Are there, just from a zoning standpoint, adding a second living structure on a property, that, are we going to run into issues with that?
In, in my opinion?
Yeah.
Understanding that the applicant has to come up for variance based on the size of the lot and the parking, I don't feel that there's any, you know, issues, safety issues regarding parking. Those would, would be the big issues, creating two, two primary structures on one lot. That is some, something everybody wants to do, but can't because.
Because it's not a lot.
The, the lot is too small, and in this case, he has substantial parking and presented a proposed parking plan to validate that. So it just comes.
Pretty large lot, you know, especially in town.
Yeah, I believe the second structure doesn't really encroach on the first structure. Both will have their own outdoor space or living space, and in, in a normal, smaller, you know, smaller zoning, this would be a permissible lot.
All right, but you're not intending to, your proposal isn't to have a separate lot, it's just to.
No, the proposal is to keep, keep the property as is.
Okay.
Right, there's, there's no way that, that this lot can be A and R'd without significant variance. And if the board recalls, a couple of years ago, this lot was part of a major cutting on center out, so that's already been done.
Right.
All right. Okay, is there, I guess if, if we don't have any further questions.
I, I did.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So in order to grant a variance, you have to hit certain criteria.
Right, I see.
Circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography, which affect the land or structure, but do not affect only the, the zoning district. I, I don't see that here, whereas there's, there's nothing, you've mentioned about soil conditions, there's not, nothing, you've mentioned about shape or topography.
Well, the shape of the lot is a strange shape, because they carved two easements out of the lot. So if you look at the front of the lot, on Plymouth, you'll see the lot line, on the plot plan, it appears like it's very long, but it's actually very short, they carved out into the front yard, I had to put on my glasses, sorry. And they have, they came up sixty-nine feet, then they carved back forty feet, then they extended the lot, taking away the frontage of this particular lot, so it is an irregular shaped lot, and they did the same thing on center. So the, the, the condition, on central, sorry, the condition is the same on both sides. They would have had appropriate frontage and square footage if those easements were created. Those easements could be built on, but they don't afford me the lot coverage, so.
So it wouldn't have sufficient coverage or square footage for what, for another lot?
For, for, for an A and R plan that wouldn't, wouldn't need approval. And the topography is the, that, the lot shape is the restriction here. I wasn't around when the easements were created.
Yeah.
I probably would have done it differently.
Yeah.
But the, it's done now, and I can't reverse that, but that, that is a hindrance. And then as far as a hardship, financial hardship, I want to say it's the structure, and there's no way to do that based on the value of the property without some additional income. I think it's an important piece of property for this town.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, it's a great, it's great, when you pull up there, it's just an amazing piece of property.
Yeah. So if these easements had not been granted, then you would have been able to.
Would have had an A and R.
A and R.
Yeah. And I actually appreciate the easements of there, because nobody can ever build on them. So it's going to feel like a vast open space, but it did create a very irregular shaped lot. Not often do you have two pork chop cuts in a frontage.
Yeah.
But this one does.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah.
From what I recall, that when the A and R happened, and the houses were being closed, it was probably not the best cut, but, um, you know, it passed.
It's a wild time, huh?
Yeah, it, yeah, it passed, but it was quite challenging when it went to an A and R, because it, it confused the front, rear, the front setbacks and the rear setbacks, because the driveway was so, and it just, it was, it probably could have been executed better, but it was what it was.
It created a common driveway shared between multiple people, but their lot frontages are not part of the driveways. That's what I'm looking at now.
Right.
So, so if you weren't granted this variance, what would happen to the structure?
I don't think I could save the structure.
You couldn't save it?
No.
Because you wouldn't have the income to be able to.
Yeah, it's, it's extensive, I mean, this, the building is sat as an unheated vacant shelf for many, many years. And I've been driving by probably as often as you. My, my workshop is at two forty-one West Water on the Rockland side.
Okay.
So we come up that way, we take the right, and come up through eighteen almost every day.
Okay. Anybody have any further questions?
That's all I have, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, so can we entertain a motion to close the public part of the hearing? Motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
These must make a big difference to us. You drive by it, the, the, those easements aren't obvious to, you know, just looking at it.
Which is what really actually appeals to me, because it's going to feel like open space, because it can never be built on.
Right.
So I just think it's appealing, because it still feels like a big, open lot. I don't even think, to most people, this will not feel like it's a second dwelling on the property.
Right. No, the only thing difference would be, as you notice, is caspak in it.
Right. And the minus, that you'll have one garage door that'll be eliminated.
An entrance, right.
Yeah.
As long as we don't have any issues with, you know, having a second living structure on that, I think this is a pretty good way to go to save that building, because I like how it looks already, and they're only going to improve it. Been there for a long time, so. Yeah. Are they going to have to, because it's, they're adding three bedrooms, will they have to go to the water department?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fee per bedroom.
But that's after.
It's after us.
That's an afterthought. Okay, so it's not something that's going to prevent them from doing this?
No.
That's going to be after the water department.
He goes, mine your own business, Bob, okay, fine. Okay.
If you want, if you want to issue a grant for that fee, that would be.
If it was in my power, I wouldn't, so. Yeah. Well, then I guess.
Well, I think based on, and I'm glad we asked, and you.
Clarified.
Clarified that as far as the hardship is far, due to the shape of the lot, I think that, I think he meets the criteria for.
I hate to lose it.
Yeah.
It's a nice looking piece of property.
Shape of the lot, there is a hardship as a result of that, so.
It's a beautiful property.
It's been there a long time.
Yeah.
Long, longer than my thirty-one years here, so. Are we ready to entertain a motion, or one of two motions on this? Is this?
Just one motion, right?
Just one.
This is a variance.
Just a variance.
It's only for a variance.
Seventy-five.
Not a, not a special permit, just a variance, okay, so it needs to be one.
I'll make a motion on the petition of Michael Hearn for a variance, that we approve a variance under one seventy-five dash fourteen, location of and driveway access to principal building, in order to allow the existing detached accessory structure garage to become a three-bedroom and one-bathroom, single-dwelling unit, creating a secondary principal building on the lot, to be built in substantial conformity with the plan submitted with the petition. The property is owned by the Rourke Mary Elizabeth Investment Trust. The property is located at four sixty-six Plymouth Street on assessing map forty, lot fifty-nine in the residential thirty zone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the time of the board, the building department was very helpful in this matter, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for saving that structure, I love that property.
Oh, I agree, thank you.
Yeah. So I guess.
I've always loved that garage.
Huh?
I've always loved that garage.
Yeah.
I drove by it quite, quite often, I mean, I wish I had that.
Could I give a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the zoning board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.